All meeting. This is superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two students representing our school from the health assisting program. We have Andrea Guerrero from Drake it, she's a junior, and Dylan Rich, a junior from Lowell. I'd like to invite Andrea and Dylan up to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America. In the republic of which is since one nation under God, indivisible, relitive and justice.
Have a seat for now. In accordance with nine forty C M R twenty nine point ten, remote participation adopted by the Great Lowell Technical School Committee April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, committee men LeMay will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely due to geographic distance. Meeting is being recorded. Roll call.
Mr. Espinola. Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. LeMay.
Here.
Mr. Booton.
Here.
Mr. Tatsias.
Here.
Mr. Gigi.
Here.
Mr. O'Hare.
Here.
Mr. Moran.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While the students are here, I wanted to come up and talk a little bit about an event we had today called Let Me Go Red, sponsored by the American Heart Association, the Massachusetts chapter. This was an event shared by all of our students in the district, teachers, staff. We had a fear in the mall between eleven and one, talking about heart healthy living. We had multiple demonstrations from multiple vocational programs, talking about wellness, heart healthy living, good food choices, stroke, and everything to do with heart. This was an outstanding event in our school district. I'd like to invite Andrea and Dylan to come up and make a presentation to the school committee that we received from the governor's office.
On behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of your.
Commitment to supporting the work of the American Heart Association and in.
Appreciation of your efforts to promote the education of students and community.
Members around cardiovascular health and living a healthy lifestyle.
Good job, kids. Uh, Mr. Booton, do I have any public appearance today?
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, school committee communications.
I have one.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Clausen's printed it out for everybody. After our last meeting, talking about the one man one vote and possibly reorganizing when we elect our chair, vice chairman, secretary, I spoke to Emma Chalk in charge of elections in Lowell, asked her for an update. She said she wasn't sure she would email the secretary of state's office. I followed up with her again, and she sent me this email communication that they contacted our superintendent, who's working with Mike Long to determine when when our seats would be up for election, and then when we would take place, when we would take our seats, they would take effect, so for anybody who's elected coming up. So right now, we're still in a holding padding. I spoke to superintendent Master Coller, I don't know if you had any more information since last we talked.
Yeah, I think one of the things we need to do from our end, the secretary has asked, is to, we have to support the change with a letter, it's a simple letter.
Who, um, sorry, Joe, who, secretary, what secretary?
Secretary of.
State.
State.
Okay.
Office. Uh, the letter is a simple letter, from what we're told. Mike's working on the language, it will need to be signed by the secretary of the school committee at that time. Uh, there is a deadline of April fifteenth, we have to get this in by April fifteenth. From what we're told, as they're working on the language, the key component here is because of the federal decree, just the simple letter will be doing. If the decree wasn't there, then it'd be more involved, they're told, in terms of changing the regional agreement and some of the other components. I'm hoping to get an update from Mike, they're supposed to do a conference call with one of the lawyers from the secretary's office, Michelle Tassanari. Hopefully, I got some information from you way before, obviously, our next meeting.
I just have a couple of questions on this. We've gone through this ever since the council in Lowell started the whole process of going to, you know, the one man one vote. We have been told, you know, I think it's now it's getting to be, you know, we'll, next week it's going to change, and then a week after that it might change. But there were situations where people from some of the towns were going to vote with other, well, at large and in all the different communities, but all of a sudden, there seems to be a little change in this again. So they've been they've been changing this ever since prior to last year's election for the city of Lowell. Are they changing it again, or is this something that they're making up?
Well, they just have no idea.
Yeah, well.
How to implement this.
Well, hold on, hold on, and just to get, I didn't mean to shut you up, but we've gone through the same damn thing in Lowell, where every other four weeks, the person from the election commission is changing polls and precincts and wards. You know, I've been in four different precincts in the past six years. It looks like we're going through, well, if they're starting to look for a way to implement this, it looks like they, quote, haven't done a lot of work trying to find out, you know, they had a whole year, as it is right now. I mean, I, right now, I didn't realize it, but I had to make a campaign, not a campaign contribution, but I had to, I had to send my papers in, et cetera, you know, for the election that just went back. I said, I wasn't involved in an election, but under the terms that they read on the paper, yes, because I was an elected official or anybody else was an elected official, they had to sign, send their papers in to on campaign contributions, et cetera, et cetera. So it seems like we're right back to step number one. Everybody thinks this is what's going to happen, that if it's going to, think, at one time, we were dealing with the the city hall and mayor's office, but it's it's so convoluted at this particular point, I'm beginning to wonder what the heck is going on.
Did you have something to say, Mr.?
Oh, no, I was just gonna reiterate what Mr. O'Hare said. There was absolutely nothing wrong with what was going on here at Great Lowell, and it seemed like as soon as the lawsuit, the one man one vote was won, that was enough for everybody. They they won, and that was it, and they left us out to try to figure out how do we move forward from there. So we're in that holding padding right now, and I think that the people on this board are saying, you know what, okay, well, we gotta figure it out, someone has to figure it out. We're in a holding pad, and we're up in the air, and November's the election, and someone needs to give us some guidance.
Now, is everybody, all different communities, going to run in that one election?
Well, we don't know.
Well, again, there we go, you know, we had a year to figure this out, and now we're back on.
We didn't have a year to figure this out, they had a year to figure it out.
Some of the letters that came to us gave us what they, what I interpreted, you know, from them was what, how we were going to implement that position. And I mean, I was taken a little back, you know, when they're asking me to get my papers in, I said, so what, I didn't run this year, you know?
Mr. O'Hare, I think what it is is it's not going to affect us all at the same time. It's when your seat is up, or like when my seat is up.
Well, Mr. Moran, one of the things I think is, we shouldn't be figuring out what we're going to do, because that's a guess. There's nothing concrete of what there is. All right, then, why are we even talking about, well, we might do this, or we might do that? Many of us went to city hall and got information from, I know, very valuable people, and it's, we seem to be, you know, in error again.
Yeah, Mr. Bahu.
Um, I think the only thing I want to say about it is, I heard the superintendent mention April fifteenth, we have to have a letter into the state. When the state gets that letter, I'm sure they will be hopefully quick to give us some type of response that will sort of give us the guidance that we need moving forward. A few of us are expecting to run this year in two thousand and eighteen, the state, you know, seems to be the last one to know, so let's give them their chance to come up with some type of guideline and order for it, and then we can go from there. So let's hope that we know everything by May first.
I didn't mean to jump in, but they got three years already.
Well, it is what it is.
Well.
Mr. Booton, thank you, thank you for researching that.
You're welcome.
Okay, can we move? Report of the student rep.
Thank you. Welcome to, on February fifteenth, the school committee. My name is Gabriel Penny. Organizations and clubs. National Technical Honor Society members had a successful flower gram fundraiser for Valentine's Day yesterday. They are also finalizing plans to run the N sixty hours of hunger food donation program again this year. Collecting food for students in the Great Lowell area who don't always have food. Skills USA in-house award ceremony was a huge success with the attendance of approximately two hundred and eighty parents, teachers, and friends. Mr. Pesky is holding from an interactive employability skills OSHA prep sessions every Monday after school from two oh five to two forty five, to help our students be successful in competition this year. The Skills USA district competition will be held here at Great Lowell on March fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Senior class will be selling prom tickets from March nineteenth through March thirtieth after school in the bank. Senior prom will be held May eleventh, twenty eighteen, at the Box Borough Regency. The theme this year is Met Gala, a red carpet affair. Drama Club is working with carpentry and painting and design to create props for their show, Sandbag Stage Left or One Dead Dolly. There will be two shows held in the evening on May third and fourth, twenty eighteen. They are also running a Tupperware fundraiser, and forty percent off the purchases go to the Drama Club. Please see Christian McCarthy for the link and visit the website, W W W dot Tupperware dot com. The outing club went on a successful hike through the Drake it State Forest and learned about geocaching. The members are working on planning another trip for next month. Project Purple is currently planning a trip to an escape room for next month. The math club held a successful math meet on January twenty fifth, twenty eighteen, where thirty-three students competed on eleven teams. The following team took first place, Gabriel Penya, Sonny Puleo, and Kyle Forsythe. Second place team was Nicole Rosario, Erin Hunt, Cali Bartlett. Third place team was Caitlin Jakes, Tyler Higgins, and Nathan Newcom. Below is a picture of the winner winners. These students will compete against other technical schools on the March twenty first, twenty eighteen, when Great Lowell Tech hosts their first district math meet. No, thank you. Thank you. Athletics. As for athletics, indoor track had a successful first season qualifying several athletes for M I A A state competition. The team will surely be a strong addition to our winter programs for years to come. Wrestling has has been having a lot of success while competing against some of the best competition in the state. The team fared well at some of the biggest meets of the season, finishing fifth at the state vocational tourney and fourth at the Division Two M I A A sectional meet. A total of seven Griffin wrestlers advanced to the M I A A Division Two state meet scheduled on February seventeenth. The swim and dive teams had tremendous showings in their year-end competitions, with both the girls and boys teams finishing second at the state vocational meet, and second and third respectively in C A C competition. They have also qualified several swimmers and divers for the M I A A North Sectional and Division Two state meets. Boys basketball has qualified for M I A A twenty play for a fifth straight season. The team still has a big home games coming up against Whittier, Great Orns, and non-league rival Lowell Catholic before heading into postseason play. Girls' basketball currently sits at thirteen-two on the season, qualifying them for M I A A tournament play and is in prime shape to compete for the state vocational title. The team will finish up the regular season with a big league contest with N D A before competing in the scheduled SCAF tournament over February break week. The winter cheer team will be competing in several invitational competitions, as well as the C A C league championships in the coming weeks. They will look to once again be crowned league champions and qualify for the regional and state competitions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabriel, can I ask you one question?
Yes.
So there's some things that are mentioned in here of a Gabriel Penya.
Yes, sir.
Is that the same one that would be the student representative?
Yes, sir.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you, uh, do you think you couldn't tell him something earlier before the meeting about the pentathlon that's coming up?
Yes, um, so.
The winter.
On the twenty eighth, um, we, okay, so indoor track was offered during the eighties, and Saturday, the program stopped.
Yeah, unplugged.
Really?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Uh, what event did you run?
I ran the fifty yard dash, and I also threw the shot put. And I I ran against Jamie Morris, who won the M V P for the Green Bay Packers against the Patriots in nineteen eighty-six.
That's awesome.
I'd like to see him do the fifty yard dash now.
I can't do the fifty yard dash right now.
Hopeless assisting students still here?
But we were competitive, and I did not know that we didn't have an indoor track team until this past year.
Yeah.
When they reinstated it, I, I, because we were a pretty good track team.
Yeah.
Indoor, outdoor, and I was surprised that we lost it.
Why don't you tell him what you'll be doing?
Oh, okay, um.
To show him up or anything, just let him know what you're gonna be doing.
Me and two other fellow runners are doing the pentathlon the twenty eighth, and that's going to be at Reggie Lewis, and I'm looking to set the school record, hopefully.
Great place.
Thank you.
Great, great, great.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I look forward to it.
I like lofty goals.
Yes.
Great, wow.
Well, think of the state record. Uh, that's almost impossible.
But glad, but did you see the math, that you got first place in math?
Thank you. Um, it was Sonny and Kyle. Uh, no, it was just, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and you, Miss Davis, oh, yeah, she was.
Miss Davis! So so we got a runner and somebody that can do math very well. One of each, and then someone who can do both.
She was giving us the answers, I'm telling you, she was, she was like, guys, it's.
Giving you the answers.
Congratulations, Gabe.
Fantastic, first place, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you very much for representing us.
Um, they elected me the M V P too, for the math team, so then, um, I got a graphic.
Excellent.
I love this.
Very good.
For you.
Thank you, thank.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks for all you do to make us look good.
Thank you.
Yes, Gabe, keep up the good work.
I wouldn't have these opportunities if I wasn't here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes.
You did them well, thanks.
Approval of the minutes for January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Bahu and Espinola.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. LeMay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes. Approval of the February first, two thousand and eighteen executive session vote. Mr. Booton, that's us.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. LeMay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes. Approval of the minutes of December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen executive session. Mr. LeMay, Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. LeMay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes. Report of treasurer, approval of the warrants.
Motion to waive the reading. Second.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. LeMay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes. Motion to approve the expenditures for the sum of three million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. LeMay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes. Uh, report of general counsel, well, report of the superintendent director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I have a few items, two of them are going to take some time, one's a formal presentation. Uh, but the first item on the agenda is the Cooperative Education Report, which is the monthly report that comes out. As you can see, this time of year, sometimes some of the trade positions hard to be able to put students in, but again, I continuously talk to Stacy in terms of finding applicable opportunities. I also thank all of you for always bringing up any potential connections to me. Uh, I think it's important, and I welcome that going forward. Uh, number two, I'm gonna move over to the front here, if you don't mind. She's been introduced before, but I want to reintroduce Lisa Martinez, the Director of Technology, Enrollment, Public Relations for the school district. As you know, she's been here with us since August of of last year, has done an outstanding job. One of the things I asked her to do when she came on board is to start identifying, based upon some of the needs assessment that were already done in the school district, of potential new programs that we can look at and explore. One of the reasons I asked her to do that is because of her experience doing this at a vocational school in the past. I was able to identify her strengths and be able to tap into something I thought she could bring to the table. As you all know, one of the things for the vitality of a good vocational school is being able to look at industry trends, being able to look at the job market, being able to look at a three to five to ten-year projection of where the opportunities will be for our students. We looked at a lot of different programs, and I think over the next couple of years, this is something I believe I'm going to bring to you to take a look at going forward. This program tonight, that we put in a letter of intent and application, is at the beginning stages. It's nowhere near the end of where we need to go in terms of this particular program, but I wanted to share with you tonight some of the activities that we've done and actions that we've taken to potentially, potentially put this program in place as a new program. Legal and Protective Services is a state certified Chapter seventy-four program. One of the things in terms of this program, it fits tightly with our mission statement, obviously, career, college, citizenship, and twenty-first century. We're going to go through a few slides, I might do a few, and Lisa's going to do a few. And if you have any questions, I think it may be good, instead of waiting, bring them right up, all right, bring them right up as we go along. Again, part of the rationale is looking at the frameworks, and legal and protective service, the competencies include civil and criminal law, police officers, firefighters, E M Ts, security and loss prevention, personnel, and of course, this is where we're aiming at with this particular program, cybersecurity and forensics. If you look at the job market today in certain parts of the country, especially for this part of the country, cybersecurity is in the top three of any job in terms of trying to fill a skill level for a potential student or adult moving forward. One of the things we did look at, we'll get into this in a few minutes, four of the major cybersecurity companies in the country are in our backyard. One, you might be familiar with RSA Technology, which is in Burlington, and Sofos, which is another one in Billerica. We look carefully at the local industries, state and labor statistics, how, what the program graduation rate's going to look like fifteen years from now. And most importantly, I want to, I want to highlight the last paragraph there. When you look at the super region, which is part of the North Shore workforce development, it's made up of us, Great Lowell area, Lower Merrimack, and North Shore workforce. There is not one program in the northeast corner that deals with this potential area. We put together some basic timelines for you to see, as I mentioned earlier, we're at the beginning stages. We filled out a letter of intent, which is fairly easy, we did a basic preliminary, and I want to caution you also, even if we get this, even if we get full approval, it doesn't mean we're going to go forward with it. I think one of the activities too that we wanted to do is go through a Chapter seventy-four program application process, which hasn't been done in a while also, so we wanted to go through that process also. And again, I wanted to make sure and put this disclaimer, this one by no means has any more importance than any others. We're also looking at some others, but this is one that we've allowed to go forward with. Another reason is we looked at the cost of starting this program, it's minimal compared to some other programs. Secondly, in regards to the space in the building, it's a minimal space requirement, it's part of the requirements for Chapter four, seventy-four program. Of course, we've looked at dental assisting, veterinarian, I mean, I know some of that discussion, you're very used to as an experienced board, you've heard that before, right, so this is the type of timeline that we're looking at. I estimate that sometime in the spring, if we do get this, we'll come forward with you to you to talk about this and see if it's feasible to move forward. Uh, we really don't have anything budgeted in this this coming budget that we talked about last week, two weeks ago, uh, so we'd have to make some adjustments if we decided to go forward with it. Obviously, with the amount of students that we brought in this year, freshmen, being able to produce programs, cutting-edge programs, is going to be an important aspect of what we do.
Uh, one question, you said something about minimal space requirements, do you know what that space is?
It's going to be a classroom, I don't have the exact size, but it's one, it'd be one classroom.
One class.
One classroom.
Joe, do we get any feedback, we go back to the other, so either on the application, the preliminary part A or part B, do we get any input back from the state as to where we're at, what they're thinking of?
We should be hearing soon on the twelve, eight preliminary.
Okay.
And even if we don't get, you know, we're not asked to go forward, doesn't mean that this is, this is dead, we thought about that, that it is a potential to resurrect it again in the next cycle. So it's, you know, some of this is practice to go through it, putting our ducks in a row with advisory, which we're going to talk about in the morning, in a minute, being able to look at the industry trends, because that is a key component at the state level, looking at co-op and industry trends. Now, one of the things you may look at, and throw another disclaimer out, you're saying, well, this is just to get put jaws as a police officer. Yep, it's part of that potential area, but we're focusing, our key focus is on the cybersecurity, the forensic E M T. We also think, and I had mentioned this to the group before, we also think that we may be able to have a relationship with Homeland Security to be able to attract some funding for this type of program, due to the fact it's not anywhere in the east coast, eastern part of the state. Uh, obviously, the college relations, we're going to talk about that in a moment. We're able to see easy connections to two and four-year colleges with this program, if we were able to put it together with kids.
So if if the twenty ninth, June twenty ninth, they say you're approved, we would be looking at implementing something twenty twenty. Like the fall of the nineteen.
Probably.
The nineteen school year.
Perhaps the nineteen school year, uh, it could be midpoint of eighteen nineteen. Uh, I know it's hard to do, obviously, we had to do exploratory, you know, like, you know, if that's another decision we have to make, are we going to do this as an exploratory?
Could we?
For the first round.
Could we do an exploratory, would it give you enough time if on the twenty ninth, we heard we're good? Could you do an exploratory? Would you have enough time, because the kids have already been dedicated into.
No, we'd have to decide if we're going to start an exploratory in the fall, if we got approved at that date, or think about.
That's what I'm saying, if if it's June twenty ninth, then the fall of two thousand.
We do an exploratory, nineteen.
Fall of twenty?
You'd have to do the exploratory in nineteen.
Nineteen.
A year later.
Right.
Because the kids have already committed to it here.
Right.
Sure, I'm sorry, okay, great.
What is the?
What is the uh, do you want, uh, Paul? Um, it's nowhere being done right now. Does that not, does that not raise a flag to you?
No.
That that we're inventing the wheel here and uh, or maybe uh, like, how does this happen? Cause I don't know if you know this, but the number one um degree that FBI agents have is an accounting degree. So are are we, oh, oh, uh, i- is it some, are we trying to go after a market that isn't there? And that's why, like, we're we'll, we're we're digging for gold here, we think? And i- is is it something that is is out there that there's a need for it?
So there are already programs and very uh robust programs in in New Bedford and Blue Hills. And um, and we actually during the planning process went to those schools. I also, uh, there's also a robust program that's on, yeah, probably second, third year in Boston that I um spearheaded as well. So uh, so there are many very good programs uh out there and it's an up-and-coming uh field. And and many, if, once you see the data tables, some of them are concentrating on on necessarily paralegals per se. And um, you know, the labor force isn't necessarily, um, is not necessarily there for that industry. That's why we're looking at the emerging fields uh of cybersecurity and forensics.
There are programs out there.
There are very, yes.
I'm being told that there aren't any programs.
There aren't, there aren't any programs in this area we would be servicing, so we would be filling a need in this end of the state. But there are other programs in the state that are robust.
Alright.
So there's none in the Merimac Valley?
Yes.
North Shore.
North Shore.
Or uh, uh.
Good boss.
So we would be filling, we would be filling a need.
Okay. Yeah, um, right now, I see, depending what time of year, there's all sorts of, well, these are adults, uh, you know, older adults training to be policemen, low policeman, district policeman, whatever. One of the policemen, well, I think is the in charge of that program, and that's always moving them up into their own district. It's not, they're from all over. Another, uh, I don't know whether it ever came to fruition, but I know Charlie Lyons was trying to do dental. He was talking about dental earlier. And I don't know whether that came to fruition. Uh, do you know anything about that dental program that he tried to implement?
And Shashin, I don't know. I I know that you're starting that program is probably the most cost prohibitive programs to put together uh in space too. There's a large space requirement for that, but the equipment is probably one of the highest Chapter seventy-four for after veterinarian uh services uh to pull together, so. Uh, I'm not sure. I don't know. I gotta, I gotta look and see if they have it.
But basically, so I, you'd be probably concentrating on criminal action or police or whatever.
I think, I, one of the, the other part of 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 Joe's question is that when this was put together as a program, the the program was really built around police officers and firefighters and legal, a little bit illegal. The competencies have changed. We're trying to capture the cybersecurity and forensic in a big part of the EMT.
That's what's gonna make this program flourish. It's not the police, not the fire, not the, it's the cyber stuff, which is gonna make a big deal. Cause any, but be honest with you, um, I was a police officer, so anybody can get that job. Obviously, right? But um.
One of, one of Lowell's finest.
So, um, it's, it's not a s- it's not anything that anybody wants to get into right now is police work. Trust me when I tell you, it's down five, six hundred percent applications to be a police officer in the state of Massachusetts. The cyberc- cybersecurity and the um protection of identities is something that is 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 up and coming. And uh, um, I don't know if if you're at a point where you have to have a syllabus or a a game plan for it, but I I I think that it should be tailored towards the cyber part of uh security.
Uh, me, my turn. Okay, you wanna go first?
Okay.
No, I think this is really good because personally speaking and most people here at this table know that I spent a lot of years working around financial uh institution and uh, this was part of our daily also. And I used to have to take some of this uh homeland security myself. It's very involved in uh, in banking and online banking and so it's, it's big. It's very big.
You've seen it move to cyber.
Yeah, right, right.
First hand. The program that's being designed, is that so that students graduating from Greater Lowell Tech can go right into the job market? Or are they, it, the program is more tailored to get them into the college level and then into the security side?
Can we, can we answer that with this slide right here?
Okay. Am I ahead of you?
Uh, you just turned it on.
Okay.
It's all those things, okay?
Yeah, it's good. I'm fine. I'm fine with that. It's good. It's a good discussion.
Well, I'm going to sort of uh discuss the post-secondary partners, and this is an exciting piece of it, especially here in the in the Greater Lowell area. So currently, uh, we we looked at um articulation agreements as well as uh potential dual enrollment opportunities and for them to advance their high school major and working with Middlesex Community College as well as UMass Lowell. They already partner with one another in in these paths, and you can see, I I've included a table of the actual majors. So it's pretty exciting. Uh, they have certificate programs, which answers your question of of before. Um, so the path really is for Greater Lowell Tech to go right into the job market, certificate programs, associate's degree, as well as bachelor's and 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 beyond. So this is truly a path where students could sort of opt in and out on in different areas into the workforce, and so it aligns very nicely.
And the starting salaries for that type of position?
Sure, we have slides for that as well and we provide it for you. We don't. Uh, what's also very, which is exciting is Lowell as as a uh post-secondary partner that we we've also uh worked with um and procuring. And they already have a student police academy in place with um with younger students and middle schoolers and and grade students. And they've served over thirty-two hundred students in the Lowell area, uh, but in Lowell for the past fifteen years. And what this academy does is it provides middle school students, and again, I think this is where it aligns nicely with our objectives and our mission. And they're looking at leadership skills and community skills, which are um skills that we reinforce here at Greater Lowell uh as part of um the career readiness skills. So that aligns uh very nicely with um Skills USA and everything they have in place here already. And and what this does is it it creates a pipeline for students to come to Greater Lowell who are interested in this field. So the pipeline is already there. So that's pretty exciting um piece for for Greater Lowell as as we as we move forward with the planning. Does anybody have any questions about that?
So you're saying that the Lowell uh Student Police Academy, we're trying to um ef- uh effectively uh recruit them to come to this school based upon
Interest.
their um experiences with the Lowell uh Student Police again, which I was teacher for four years. Um, but, okay, um, I just don't, am I, am I kid, am I, am I able to make the connection? Cause they're young kids. Um, uh, how do they get to the stepping stone to come here? Uh, how how does that happen?
Well, they would, they would know that they have the opportunity to major in their interest here, just like many of the other programs here, and they would go through the exploratory as well.
Okay.
Uh, along with the all, all of the other shops. But just, just as if people have, who apply to the school, who have an interest in in medical or in electricity or what have you, they would also have the opportunity to explore those programs as well. So here's where we have um the local demand and um the labor statistics um for the um local work workforce in 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 investment board. And this is where the review was. And and what um you've spoken about is that these are tier one primarily because there's little growth in this industry expected. However, as um, as has been already mentioned at at this meeting, it's a very large employment um and very high demand for annual openings. As well as the need to um diversify um police, fire, emergency management a- as well. So so that's a positioning our graduates uh for access to these positions um that are are traditional positions. And you can see that we provided some data charts um to look at, um, the annual earnings, the average annual earnings and and um what type of education you would need to to be able to um.
I think it's kinda low.
To access that.
I think the salary range is low. That what it is.
Try applying.
One of the fault.
This was provided by the the workforce. And because of that, we also provided some local data, but we also included um the super region, and that's where the salaries actually increased and actually the labor demand increased. So looking at the local data, which um, which was not as ro- robust and um a- at this time, and they're going to provide more data in two thousand eighteen, but when we look to the super region that um, and we look at their data and and the local markets, um, you 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 will see that that the salaries actually increase.
It's like a nine, yeah.
I know. Uh, so so one of the, this next piece for the twenty-first century readiness, this is the the last piece of where it works really well with our mission, and this is the emerging, the emerging industries. And you don't have to read all that. We have that for you. So but a- as we're talking about it, you see that when we were planning the program, we wanted to have uh take a look at the cybersecurity, the skill development, and really focus on in in this piece where um they would look at forensics and and cybersecurity. Look at the National Quick Facts for Forensic Science as well as uh for Information Security Analyst, and you see that the average annual wages go up dramatically. So um, so that's um provided for you here for for your review. We also looked at um the the state labor labor market and and we're ahead of the curve here and that's ongoing. So there's little data on the cybersecurity employment, but as it, you move forward, we we can actually go to the next slide. Now, at the US Bureau of Labor Statistics actually highlights cybersecurity occupations. And many of these, as Joe can can mention, are aren't, are in our backyard. So. So the ongoing planning of support is, um, we're planning the program, as I mentioned earlier, uh, with some of the programs that are already very robust in the state. So with um Blue Hills, uh, as well as um New Bedford and and Boston as as some of the um, the the programs that that we can partner with. Many of them have uh have have um co-op opportunities that we've we've looked at, and everybody has their own um sort of um angle on the criminal justice. So that that part is um, is is always uh developing for for different programs. So um, the one relationship we're working on is the EMT for the Trinity Emergency Medical Services, and they've agreed to actually partner with us as well, and we're looking at other partnerships with the sheriff's office as well as um, as well as looking at uh me uh being on our advisory committee, assessing us with the program implementation. And also, we we worked with um Drakeit Police Superintendent as well as the Lowell Superintendent in Chief of Police, and they both have provided us uh letters of support for the program. So, and they're eager to partner with us.
Right. So I'd just like to say, uh, I, it was a great presentation. Your facts are terrific. There's no buts. There's no but, but I think it's terrific. I think it'd be a benefit to the school and to the students we serve. I think what Mr. Espinola said about, you know, those first tier of police officers, I don't know how many kids would go directly into that. I typically think they need either uh military experience or um a college degree, but there are a lot of things that are up and coming, the forensics, the cybersecurity. If we can get in with Homeland Security where we have Manchester Airport, Worcester Airport, and Logan Airport, um, it'd be a great feeder for our kids to have, come out and have jobs, well-paying jobs right away, so. Great job on this and uh appreciate all your work. Look forward to seeing how we do.
I just wanted to point out that the timing is for someone to learn something like this is astronomical. Look at the la- latest incident that took place with the deaths, you know, there there were police there, some police, but you know, a policeman to a policeman may not be able to handle a big school. And uh, maybe they have a different title, but basically the the uh, I don't know what the responsibilities or uh title would be, but they would be in some way supportive of what kind of uh people that you had in the school that now. Because, you know, if something happens, one person isn't gonna, you know, solve the problem. But I think timing is perfect for something like this.
I don't wanna toss the rock. Um, as I was saying earlier, um, uh, I I didn't come to the, to become a police officer. Um, so we have all these um, um, letters from the superintendents, whatever, that that are uh pledging their commitments or whatever. I mean, I don't, I don't think personally, based on my experience, that they can offer any um advantage to kids that are in the um, the school that are in this program. Um, they don't get any extra points. You don't get any extra points for having a degree. You don't get any extra points for anything. You take the test, you you get your mark, and you have points for um various different things, like uh Mr. Booton had had um uh suggested that uh your experiences in the service uh give you a um, um, a couple of extra points. My problem is this. So, and and it might be a little bit of a dead horse, but I'm looking at our co-op stuff that we have now, currently, the stuff that we have going on in this school right now. We're not doing well. We're not doing well. We're we're down in fourteen out of the twenty-four shops. We we've discussed the automotive stuff um in in past meetings. Are 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 we make, are we taking on something that it's just gonna convolute the rest of the programs that we have here? Or is it something that we're gonna be able to handle in addition to bringing these numbers up? Because fourteen out of twenty-four, that's more than fifty percent of our co-op programs are down. Bringing on another program into the school, and it might be somebody's baby, and they might take, take care of it, and 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 uh it might be successful. But to the other shops that we have, do they suffer? Um, because we are putting in uh extra um resources to make sure that this program i- it survives because you guys are new to the school and you want it to survive. And but these programs have been here for a long time and they're they're basically not doing well uh with the co-op. So um, my question, I guess, is how do you, how do you ensure me as a board member, if I bring on this, this new program, that these programs don't get neglected further? That's my only question.
It's it's a fair question. It's not an e- obviously not an easy answer to answer. Uh, I can tell you that the 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 gist of putting something like this together is to be able to put cutting-edge opportunities for our kids. Do we have a potential co-op problem? Perhaps. Do we need to do a better job? Yeah. I mean, I think we all wanna have a higher number in co-op uh for all of the programs. Uh, but do we need to look at, as we move forward in the years, as a cutting-edge vocational school, offering career opportunities, which has always been the mission statement here? We started with that. Yeah, and these are the type of things I think they need to look at. Could, could one of the programs suffer? Yeah. It could, one of the existing programs. Uh, when we look at um, when we look at, just say, exploratory, we're looking at the, you know, potential results. Uh, yeah, that's the discussion that comes up, to be honest with you, in terms of looking at sustainability. Uh, if we have to look at. Uh if we have to look at, you know, two to three, four, five years down the line. Uh that, you know, again, we don't know what, you know, talked about this during the budget process, chapter seventy funding, health insurance. And that we may need to look at the budgets in terms of programs, never wanna do that, wanna don't wanna get back to where we were ten, fifteen years ago, and some of you who were part of that. Where we were cutting budgets every year in every school district. So it's a little bit, you know, it is, you're right, it's a little bit of that, but I do think, you know, we wouldn't be here putting this forward if we didn't think that. And have the data to think that this could be a program, and it e- even if it goes in, it's gonna take years to evolve. It's, you know, it's not gonna be a robust program first year out of the gate. You know, by the time we get to a senior level with co-op, uh you know, it's gonna take a few years. Uh and the other thing with that is due to the fact that it's gonna be a smaller number, obviously, ten to fifteen, maybe a little bit more, second year or so. Um we the co-op opportunities have to really be tied into a partnership. I don't think we can find co-op the same way we've been looking at co-op with maybe some other places. I think we need to find the place that's gonna take five, six kids every year, one place. Um especially for the cyber security. And again, I'm pretty confident with the companies that were listed there, we can earmark to those five companies. So, you know, we we're all right about this, you know, there are some valid points.
You put fifty kids in that class, I'll find fifty jobs for them. But that doesn't help my co-op program that we have for these kids that are here right now. So I'm okay with this program, I'm I'm telling you that the cyber part of it, the computer part of it is where it needs to go. And Paul will agree with me, the cyber and the banking and and the uh ID theft and all that stuff. The policing and fire stuff, that's, I mean, it plays out its own part, it's its own world. If we're moving away from these shops, then I wanna have a plan. We talk about the automotive thing that 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 is just bothered the heck out of me for the last few months. How how this automotive thing is is going down there? Do we, if we're moving, I wanna know, that's all I that's that's all I'm saying. If we're moving and we're moving into new shops and we're moving into a different way. I think it's it's the right of the of the rest of us to to know that that's what your vision is. And 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 I would like to get on board with you. It it's just, when I look at the numbers that we have on co-op here, we're bringing on a new thing, brand new, new shop and whatever. Is it gonna be successful and do are we just taking resources out of uh the rest of our school?
I think you bring up a very good point, Ms. Espinola, but also, if you remember a few years ago, we brought on engineering. Which has been a. Good success story, you know, in some cases, we may have to eliminate a technical area that is. There are no jobs, Colin, unfortunately, right?
And I'm okay with that, I just think that we need to be part of the the planning and the vision that people have for this school. Because we're the ones that are elected to move this school forward. And if and if we're gonna take out all these shops and we're gonna go to technology, um engineering, things like that. I just think that we should be more included in.
Yeah, absolutely, I think you should, right?
At what point in the process do we actually solicit or um look into partnership companies? Is it too early to do that now to see if they would take five or six students down the road? Or um to see what the demand might be to kind of fill those co-op positions?
No, we're 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 putting up failures now. Uh it's 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 gonna be a challenge to 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 place that, I we recognize that one of the factors is potentially age. With some of the positions, uh so we recognize that, we were able to understand that. Um but some of the positions uh we feel, again, if we have the partnership with one company. That's where the kids would go, they wouldn't be really separated, they'd all go to one place with that partnership, I feel pretty strongly about that.
To follow up on Mr. Gagie, that was gonna be my similar question, but is it worth it? The four that you put Apex, Kronos, R S R S A and Security Innovation, is it worth between now and April? When we put on a second, find out from them what they're looking for. We think, you know, cybersecurity and forensics sounds good, that that's a a path to go to? Go to them, if if we put this program in play, what uh what co-op opportunities do you have and where do you see a need? Is cyber security, you know, a couple of them do that specifically, you know, that's a good one, but is forensics, is there something else that could be incorporated in this? That would bring kids to those jobs and then give us those co-op opportunities? So let's find out from the end user what they're looking for too. If you if we could do that and get feedback on that, maybe in a couple of meetings from now, that'd be great.
I guess I have a question.
That's enough.
Um but anyway. Yeah, I'm feeling pretty quickly. If you 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 say it's it's a New Bedford and it's a Blue Hills, I heard you mention. I heard you mention Boston. Um and could you give them a call and see if they're sort of working with co-ops to see if sort of businesses are, you know, biting. Um on that particular um, uh what should I say, shop? Because, you know, this is, of course, we we're just um starting it or considering starting it. And other school districts have started, as a matter of fact, I think you were saying, Ms. Martinez, you started over in uh Blue Hills, is that correct?
No, in Boston, that's one of them.
Over in Boston, okay, so so how long has it been um?
This is the second year, third and second, third year, so.
I'm sure you could call, it wouldn't be that tough, where you maybe pick up the phone, find out, you know, if there's businesses that are sort of tying into students. Whi- which high school was that in Boston?
It is English High School, in Boston.
It was English High School, terrific, um so, you know, if you could just find out that information, at least that way we see where it's going. Moving forward with other districts who have sort of have already implemented it. And we get a feel for it, but I I love the frameworks, I think the frameworks really s- cover a lot of ground. And uh let's be real here, there's a definite need for all types of security, this is unfortunately the security world these days. So um, you know, great work, um you know, and again, just like, you know, Mr. Master Cola said, you know, we're 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 trying to see what this is like. To implement the new program and go through that motion and such like that. And then we'll figure it out after we get approved and see if the school committee wants to adopt it, so, great work, thank you for your presentation.
Cheers.
Um I find it fascinating that that we're moving in this direction. And I think that it's an up-and-coming uh field. But I'm having a hard time trying to figure how a student coming out of high school. Or even while in high school, wh- what type of work there would be. Um in this field for somebody at that stage, it seems it um. Are there jobs available for somebody with that level of training or um? Would they need more?
Mo- mostly, most of, most likely, it would go towards what we showed earlier. A path where a certificate program would be first, then an associate, uh and then the uh then the bachelor's degree. Uh the certificate's gonna be valid, but it would it would put them in a position to be able to facilitate a certificate program now the easier. Or be in an entry-level position while getting a certificate, so it's a combination, combination of both. In terms of some of the pieces with the um with uh Homeland Security, yes, it's a it's a direct path. Into Homeland Security, yeah, it's a direct path. Obviously, when they go through the Homeland Security Program uh for uh TSA, uh they they go through their own training program. They say, I know this because I know, they they send them to Atlanta, everyone goes to Atlanta for the training. That was one of the things we were batting around, could we be a regional training center somewhat to do some of that? Obviously, it's a lot of equipment and such, so it's a combination of of the of what you had mentioned, but it's mainly. The path to a certificate, associate, bachelor's.
So so with it, with that in mind, would there be, and I don't think this is a uh. Uh a factor that would either make it or break it, but would there be um co-op opportunities thought?
There is, but this it's gonna be challenging, as we mentioned, I think the it's not gonna be a traditional co- co-op. That we see now with uh where if kids are in a a potential capentry uh co-op, they're in different areas. It's gonna be specific to one company, we're gonna have to find that partnership, that group to partner with. Uh and again, because of the 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 hotbed of these companies, cybersecurity, forensics in our backyard, more or less. Or down Route Three, uh we're gonna have to do a lot of work to make that connection, that's gonna be the connection.
Yeah.
I see some openings maybe in data collection that kids can probably do. Um where they're gathering the information off of these different sites and that, that doesn't take a whole high level. To kind of gather that information and funnel it in. And I understand that this is a relatively new program, but when you were at English, they've been around for two years now, they're going on the third year. Is there any statistics or any things where they're showing that kids are being accepted into co-ops?
Sure, so in English, at an English high school, it's a day more. Doing internships rather than co-ops for their programs. And every student is placed in some type of internship or job every single summer. Um also, the the fire department, the E M Ts and so forth, all had articulations. With um looking favorably on those students for for jobs in in the summer. Blue Hills uh places places people on co-op, I would have to look at their co-op numbers and where they're placing the students in co-op. As well as great as New Bedford.
Cause I do see the uh kids' skill levels probably in the data collection. And these companies wanna find out how the information is being obtained and being used, and there could be avenues. I don't know, I'm just thinking outside the box here.
There's also the technology side of of um making sure that the computers are secure, that's security and cyber security. Cyberbullying, working on cyberbullying campaigns um with um some of the uh younger students. Um in the boys and girls clubs, we've placed people there um in jobs where they're they're getting paid for that. So um a big push on the cyberbullying.
Cause it'd be nice if the public could give us some input too and. Opportunities for young people. And their training, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, uh back in uh September, I asked uh Mr. Byrne to start the process. Of collecting information to develop a five-year capital plan. We've also uh included uh some information in regards to our advisory too. So it's made up of both physical plant and some of the equipment in regards to some of the areas in our uh in our vocational programs. Mr. Byrne's gonna come up and make a summary presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee. Um as uh the superintendent um, I was here a few minutes ago. We um I was tasked uh uh by him and um his uh administrative team. To um meet with the cluster chair people and the department heads to kind of summarize a five-year capital well-laid plan. Uh for the school. Um and what I did is I spent uh several hours with different department heads. Um almost uh we went through two rounds of it, just kind of uh tweaking it and going through the process. With um uh myself and Linda Austin all helped me and also um all the department heads. Um what I do have is just one uh one minor change before we get started, um it was not minor change. In twenty twenty, under um Plant Services, we um we I have a. I had put a a plant, it was two hundred and sixty-two, five in there, and it's really one oh five. Because the areas that eh um the su- the school committee approved um last year. When we did um C M U uh wall, uh outside walls, when we uh power washed the walls and everything. We figured it was gonna cost us X amount of dollars. And what we did is we bid, we bided the job out, we had three or four companies come in. We had a great day as as uh some people were, we had a great day at the uh at the table when we bid this project. And we were able to do, we think that we probably got a, instead of doing a three-phase process, we might have got two phases out of that first year. So we thought it was gonna be a three-phase process when we went into this project, so I think that uh I'm not gonna have to do it. We'll we'll complete it this summer, so we'll complete the rest of the school this summer, we believe. So we cut the one, there was one fifty in there, so in twenty twenty, we eliminated that one fifty.
Which is, which covers the block, do I?
Which covers the block, we've already done probably a good, probably better than, probably around two-thirds, a little less than two-thirds. We think that if we have another good bid day, we'll complete the block.
Okay.
This summer.
And that's cleaning as well as building?
This 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 cleaning and 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 re uh repriming it and stuff, yeah, yeah. So that's just, that's one area and and that also changes the.
Excuse me, that next bid is gonna be July, after July first?
Yeah, we'll put it out probably, say, you know, April or so, and we'll know.
Put on the nineteen budget.
It'll be on the nineteen budget, yeah, yeah, and uh and that, we are going through that with the budget process right now. And so that number i- i- in the twenty twenty, uh the summary would have been, um it was six fifty-one, eight ninety-six. And it goes down to four ninety-four, three ninety-six, so that's that's that that's the change, and that's basically it. So basically, um all these, um some of the areas that you see here, we didn't have to do a lot of um. Like in the math and science areas, because they did major renovations in the school. So if you look in under math and science, other than maybe painting and that, the the math rooms, the science rooms are all, they're all re- all note. So they don't, you know, so Carol didn't ask for any requests there, it was minor stuff that she asked for. Some painting and some really spoosin' some of her math classes, so that's what she asked for capital L A. But then you go into some other areas, if you go down into, you know, Donnie, Dushan.
Can I go back and ask you a question, I know, my, I'm sorry, it's a little fuzzy at the top, so you took a a hundred and five out of. About two sixty-two?
Yeah.
But that's for twenty twenty.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred fifty thousand.
In twenty twenty. And it goes down, it it goes down by one fifty.
But next year's budget's gonna be the eighteen, right, nineteen, no, sorry, nineteen.
It'd be twenty.
Nineteen.
It it's it's really for, we're going into nine.
If this coming July.
It'd be eighteen, nineteen, so the what we what we have in here is the nineteen.
Year end nineteen, so these are year ends, but wouldn't that affect the two hundred thousand for the plant services?
No.
Cause that's two years from now.
No, the two hundred thousand right now um is gonna be upcoming this year, the nineteen, we're we're going on nineteen.
I would, so the work that you're gonna be doing on the outside is gonna be starting July first?
Correct.
Which is the.
It's really the.
End year of nineteen.
It's a nineteen budget, yeah.
Right, which would be out of the two hundred thousand.
It's out of the two hundred, I'm sorry, yes, 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 yeah.
Alright, and then will you still need the two sixty-two?
No.
In twenty twenty.
We cut that by hu- hundred and fifty grand, but I need one oh five because I I have some other things in there for the um. It was at two sixty-two and I cut one fifty.
That's why I had one oh five in there.
Yeah.
And then. But you still need two two hundred thousand next year.
I need.
And that's included in the work you're doing outside.
Yeah, the the I need the two hundred, I need the one fifty, I'm thinking that it's gonna cost us one fifty when I go to bid approximately.
Well, you're figuring one fifty for block cleaning and then fifty Q for painting, which brings you to two hundred.
Thousand for painting in the hallways.
Okay.
So that's the two hundred.
So we're two, uh we're pulling everything up two years, so that's why it ends up the two sixty-two is not gonna be needed the third year from now.
What we did is if we.
Because you doubled up this year.
If we went back this past year, when we put the package out, we thought we'd, I think originally when we presented it to you uh last year. We thought it'd be a three-phase process.
Right.
What happened is, we had a great day last year at the budget process when we submitted our bid and it came in. And we were able to do almost two-thirds of the school.
Okay, thank you.
So if you just kind of go through some of the other areas, um you know, um personal services. Where where our task here right now, based on uh some inputs that we've had in our budget process. Uh meeting with the department heads, superintendent's um input and some of the staff's input. And I believe some of the committee's input, uh asking for some things. That we're moving forward on trying to do some work in the culinary um Odison Restaurant. Being spused up a little, we need electrical upgrades in there with lighting, we need ceiling tile upgrades for acoustics. We need um painting, we're gonna um, we're also. Painting. We're gonna um, we're also gonna um.
Anything in media?
We're gonna, we're gonna, I'm sorry.
Media, you know.
Communications?
Yeah, downstairs when someone's talking.
Yeah, the 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 upgrades for the um speaker system. And then also, we would also um be doing um. Doing something with our, the block brick, uh in there, kind of, kind of, kind of bringing some of it out a little, like painting it or kind of um, kind of. Kind of cleaning it, as they they call it, washing it, whitewashing it. So we do some of it and then, and change the carpet floor to um. You know, a a more modern floor um that um is um much conducive to a restaurant. So we try to give them the res- restaurant industry. Um, they've had some uh specialists in here to help us with it. And all that, that whole package. We're trying to, we gotta bid um the electrical and some other projects. And we're putting a new acoustic um uh soundproof um divider door in there that divides the Edison restaurant through the um. The the function room.
Yeah, have you s- competitively seen any uh restaurant establishments that are, have this type of flooring or? Have you experienced any of that?
As a matter of fact, I I have, and uh so has the department head. Uh, we've um visited some restaurants. I happened to visit a restaurant last night with my family and uh I took pictures of uh the floor that I thought was a good floor. And we're uh I'm gonna present that to the department head. But we we have to, you know, we're seeking um quotes and and bids and stuff on some of these. Projects. Some of the stuff is off a state contract that we'll be able to do. Um, and uh, we're gonna do some in-house stuff. With um the ceiling tiles that will remove them. My maintenance staff will do it and they'll also install it. And um and uh I'll kind of co-coordinate getting the quotes and then. We're gonna have to bid the electrical end of it. We'll buy the supplies, but we'll bid the um bid the work. So we're gonna be able to do a lot of in-house, save some money by buying it off state contract. But also, we'll have to go to bid on some of the install for the electrical issues. And uh so that that kind of, that kind of takes care of um the the personal services area. And again, just to kind of talk with the superintendent, I've had many conversations with the department heads. These, in 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 yourselves, these are, this is a guide. This is a guide for us. That it's a, it's a, it's a working document, so that if we're fortunate to have some money that. Uh, something comes in and 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 the departments wanna do it, and it's approval through the superintendent. And the su- school committee wants to do it. We're gonna be flexible. We could, some things could come in and some things could could go out. Based on the amount of money that is available and and the need for the department head. And I really are, the need here is, we're our number one focus is the students. Absolutely, no doubt about it. We're trying to make the 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 um. Any of the money that we spend here or on any of the capital improvements is geared towards the students and and to improve the school. I mean, we had, you know that, you guys all participated in the sixty-five million dollar project. And we did as much as we possibly could with that money. But we still gotta maintain and keep everything up. And some of the staff is asking for some things. And uh that they're outside of that sixty-five million. And so that's what we're here for, and to try to improve uh those programs. And some things could come in in twenty twenty that weren't here today that will 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 obviously they'll will update. I'm sure the superintendent will update you every year on a five-year plan and anything changes here. Um, technology, we we we, you know, obviously, I guess there's the latest technology, buying Chromebooks and new computers. Um, as the, as money allows us to do it, upgrading some of our media centers, upgrading maybe the lecture hall. With some of the electrical and some and lighting in there, and maybe some sound system. We need to probably do a little enhancement there. And uh, and that's basically, it that kind of summarizes the five-year plan. Um, obviously, you see lower numbers at the, you know, fo- year four and five, but as they come in, those numbers will grow. The numbers are always big in your first couple of years. And again, it's a sliding scale. If if you want something. We'll go from there and we'll we'll move forward on whatever you you need to.
I have a couple of questions. The first one uh looked like, uh I think we're all pretty eager. To see some bleachers and some lighting and such happening over the uh football field and lacrosse field and such. And that looks like it's as far as three years out. Um, I know we rent lights sometimes for our homecoming and such like that, and we've done that twice. I think it's been very successful both times. Um, so I don't know if we could maybe move, you know, those um that, th- those pieces of equipment up a little bit further, go ahead.
Through uh the initiative of the superintendent, this came from the superintendent, the idea. He was asking about lights and we looked at the um plan. And and by the way, just to let you know. That the April meeting, we plan on bringing uh David Warner in, who is the landscape architect that helped uh put the um. The football field, the track and the lighting scope that, so we plan on asking uh for some time here. For him to make a presentation to you people, the cost, what it came out to and all that. But to touch base on what you're talking about, lights. Um, in this year's budget, um the superintendent is um tasked in my budget to um. Go out and seek uh pricing on lighting uh for temporary lighting for football field. So that we can host not only homecoming games, but potentially other sports, whether it's girls and boys soccer. Um, and as well as um maybe doing maybe a couple of games, rather than just one, the homecoming game, which is a big thing.
Sure, baseball as well, correct? He's a transporter.
It it'd be, it it their transport, their portable um um units, they're brand new, they'd be ours. And you know, and for storage area, we'll work with the carpentry shop to um have them maybe do, build like a lean-to. So we can put them in a storage area off the warehouse, on the um east side of our my warehouse, our warehouse. That are out there where we store a lot of our equipment. But we'll have them work uh with the project. So that's one area. We are in the process of putting a bid spec out. Right now, I'm working with the uh business office, um um. Ms. Turner and um and Kerry and myself. And we're putting a bid spec out um to do some repairs to the track. And um that should be, uh, we had a walkthrough yesterday. And uh that that bid is due opening for February twenty-eighth. So we'll be doing some repairs. That should give us about a five or six-year lifespan more added on. And and we'll keep an eye on it as uh preventive maintenance on that. It's not gonna be a brand-new track. It's gonna be, you know, maybe a forty, fifty thousand dollar uh repair, but we're gonna do a lot of good things with it. And uh, uh I think that that'll make um our track a little, a much better track. But it'll give us uh some uh lifespan and give us uh hopefully a little time. Where if we can kind of come up with money and do a a full package out there, whether it, whether we're gonna do anything with the football field. Or we're gonna make a decision to just do a new track and lights and bleachers. And that's the wish of, it'll be the wish of the school committee and whatever funding you have available on your, on your table.
Mr. Byrne, uh was that gonna be LED lighting?
Yes, uh yes, it is.
I uh rec- I recently uh in my own home uh upgraded to LED lighting and. Electric cost has gone down quite a bit.
Yes, um it is gonna be LED lighting uh for the for the portable uh fixtures. I'm working with um a local vendor. Uh, in town, um and um and that's.
So.
From a cotton electric, yes.
Also in in our renovations, is gonna be LEDs too.
Yeah, so just to touch base on that, uh Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought that to my attention. Uh, my my staff here is um in the process and we have been over the last um several months. As uh we are installing LED lights on the uh on the various floors. We've already been successful in doing them on all the classrooms on the third floor and the hallways. We are, um, we've 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 changed them in the new cafeteria, the hallways leading into the school. The um into the mall area. And we have um a package that. Um, and we'll be going, then we'll be going down to the second floor. So our goal was to go to the third, to the second, to the first. Completed. Part of the packages is a six-package pro- a six um area po- uh package that. Um, myself, Billy Joe and the superintendent have worked with um an outside um. Energy consultant that works kind of in partnership with National Grid. And we're gonna be doing the girls' uh locker room, the main gym, the auxiliary gym. The machine tech shop, all the automotive area, metal fab area and carpentry. Some of the other shops are kind of like classrooms that we can change them ourselves. We, meaning our staff. Our custodial staff or our maintenance staff is doing it. And so far, um it, we believe that um. We hope to have the second floor done by um April vacation. So we'll do some this vacation. It's hard to do it at night while you're cleaning. So when we have a a shutdown when no one's around. Meaning the school vacations, we can do a lot of it. Not only is it gonna save us energy and cost, it's also gonna save us labor, because when we change the LED lights, they last four to five years. When we do a full-blown cleaning in the summertime, we go through the classrooms from top to bottom. And we, we don't have to change the, any light bulbs now. So that's one area of the cleaning that we're not gonna have to worry about. We'll dust the pop of them off and everything like that. But we're not gonna have to spend time changing light bulbs. We change them out during the year. I mean, don't say that if something goes out. We get maintenance au- audits and everything from staff. And the teachers send them to us through the cluster chair. So if there's a light bulb out in classes or something that impact their learning, we take care of it. So those are some of the things, exciting things happening. I think that we should see see some changes on our costs. And Billy Joe monitors that monthly. And um and she could elaborate more on that, but. She she monitors it monthly, wha- on the lighting and and we'll start seeing, we should start seeing some cost savings. But once we do it in other areas, by the end of the summer, we could have um, you know, a a a big, big. We could have the whole building completely done. Our parking lots are already done in LED lighting. And then at that point, we'll go to National Grid and ask them if we can be a certified, um, you know, certified and, you know, uh, you know, really a. I S O, you know, building or something like that, that um, you know, some type of a rating or something like that. But I think it's a, it's a great thing that you're allowing my staff to do. And I I and I bought all the light bulbs, they're a little expensive, but you know what? We'll get our money back and our return on investment.
It's definitely, it's definitely less expensive. But the light is a more natural light and it's more bright. Um, and I and I think it's probably, I don't know if there's a study, you're not out there, but it's gotta be more uh conducive to learning. Um, to have that type of a a lighting. I know that there's some um type of um. Situations where kids in the wintertime, because of the lack of daylight, uh they they there there's some. Learning lags uh uh for lack of a better word. So I I think the LED thing is is definitely something, regardless of if it's saving us money. I think it's just a better light for the kids to learn under.
One comment, another question. Um, I think it's fantastic we're doing this capital plan. I think us specifically from Lowell that understands when you don't maintain your buildings, what happens. So. We have a new renovation. I'm glad we're we're on top of this and you're doing, um, this is excellent. Um, one of the questions I had, I don't know if this came up before, over, you're replacing the playground in two years for the early childhood ed. Was there a a problem with lead paint, either on picnic tables or something that was out there? Was it the deck it resolved? The railings, right?
Yes, there was, there was, there was um, there was some um, there was some lead paint that was on some of the areas out there, but. We got that removed.
Okay.
We took care of it. We had a ma- a company come in, we bitted it out, and company come in and took care of all the lead planes, so we're lead-free.
Is the current um playground safe to use?
The current playground.
Not just from a lid paint perspective, but safety?
Yes, the current playground is is okay to use. I believe the playground structure is a little, um, is 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 out, safe right now. But there's a process, there's, there's, there's an example where we might move that forward.
Okay, I was just gonna ask that question.
Yeah, yeah.
It's come up a couple of years ago, I know you weren't here, Mr. Mr. Carlo, but if if that's a possibility.
We're gonna move it into next year's budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Just, just a brief question.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Raise your hand.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mister, Mister Lumine.
Mark, I under- it, I see for fiscal twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, we have uh. Was it three elevators that need to be serviced or replaced, or what does that encumbered at twenty-five thousand each?
Um, that is, um, it's a kind of, it's, it, right now, our elevator is a piston-driven and they they wanna go to the latest technology. Um, and so we got pricing on that uh just recently about doing those. And um, and that's something that um the superintendent might be able to talk about that later on that. I can. We might, that one might be another one that's, is gonna get moved forward as well.
Be a move forward also.
Is, is any of those elevators the service elevator or are they for uh? Handicap or?
Yeah, they're all.
What do they all use?
They're all a handicap accessible elevators. Um, and and the, and one of them, the big one, the main one is used. Is a service elevator for carrying, you know, any type of product or anything that we're doing anything in the building. But um, you know, our our special ed kids or our handicap staff uses um any of those um elevators.
So, uh, I think. I think for a lot of the state, they're supposed to be inspected every year. We have certificates stating that fact?
Yes, e- every year their elevators are inspected, yes, we do, and they're they've passed. This is um, this is a a situation where there they, there there, there's a recommendation that we should change. From a piston-driven elevator to another hydraulic-driven elevator to take the oils and fluids out of there. So um, but we pa- to answer your direct question, um, we pass uh inspection. Uh, on elevators prior to me coming here and uh the fifteen fifteen years that I've been here. The elevators have passed inspection. And if they, and and we have a preventive maintenance contract with Otis Elevator that they come in and um. Annually service our um elevators and check them uh once a month. Or as needed, if something breaks down, we have a contract, they come in.
Okay, thank you. My other question was uh pertaining to the library. I see a significant amount encumbered for the library. Is this something that's possibly been neglected over the years? I I see half walls being taken down. A sound booth being put in, is is this something that has been, uh, is this a wish list or is this something that's direly needed?
Um, I could say that some of the things are latest technology on media services. There's some changes. Part of it could be a little wishlist here and there, um, that where, I mean, again. We're working that out with the the department head as well as the superintendent. Um, and not necessarily, uh, will she probably get everything that she wants. Uh, but that's not my tru- my my decision to make. That's uh uh the body, you you yourself and the superintendent's decision to make.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome, thank you.
Goodness.
Just wanna go back to the elevators. And you look at the capital planning budget, we're spending two hundred thousand to power wash and repoint some of the block, right?
Yeah.
Is that something our masonry kids can do if we have a a plan in place over the next three or four years? Where they choose a a certain section of the building and and that could qualify as a. A co-op position or an internship and they they manage that part of that particular building. Um, I and I guess, I'm just trying to understand what we can maybe allocate to the kids here at the school. And reduce that kind of exposure in the future, where the kids could have it as part of their project for the the year. They they're responsible for the left side of the building. And they go out there, they take a look at it, they see where it needs to be repointed. We have a, your guidance, of course, to kind of repoint, that's not a terribly difficult task to do. Or to power wash that section of the building. That's part of masonry and it's a good skill they'll probably pick up when they start to see a defect that.
I think um, y- there there's.
There's time constraints.
There's some, there's time constraints, one. There there's two, is that, is uh, there's some height, height constraints. As they go up certain levels with um, you know, you still gotta rent. You you know, your staging and all that. So would I wanna put a kid up like two or three stories high? Um, you know, I'd be, I'd be hesitant to maybe do that. I think on the lower level areas that are maybe around uh the backside of the building, uh maybe automotive and uh. You know, certain sections that are smaller levels, we could, we could look into that. Um, it, but I think right now, um, they. they did the automotive as part of the thing, so they've already done that. The backside of the building, they can do it. And again, I, I'd have to ask, um, I, I defer to the masonry people if they were, if they felt comfortable allowing kids to use the chemicals that we're, that we're, we're spraying on the, um, you know, on the block to seal it. You know, I just don't.
Osho too.
Osho approved. I, I mean, I just don't know. So there's some questions that I don't have answers for you, but I can, I can seek them out and we can, we can talk to the masonry instructor and, and see if they could help us out, get, help that, you know?
I'm just thinking the hands-on training right here in our own building. Um, and that way we can supervise the children and through the shop and their classes and, and give them some hands-on experience. Cause you, you do maintain this building well. I think they would learn a lot from just having a schedule, like seeing the, the plan here. And, um, just a nice way to kind of bring them full circle on the skill set for the block and for maintaining and seeing that what is required.
Uh, you had a question.
Well, just to expand on that, I mean, if we're sending kids out on co-op, they may be doing that exact same thing somewhere else. So.
I might not have, I, I, I mean, I'm not a student in that area. I could, I, I can, I, I can get your questions out, answered, and I could direct them. After I find the answer, I can let the superintendent know. We can talk to the masonry instructors and see if they're, uh, they're capable of doing that.
Yeah, and just, maybe Joe can help us with this. Is there a specific requirement when the kids go out on co-op? That they're not supposed to be twenty feet in the air?
Of course.
There's all of these kind of guidelines that are out there?
Regulations, all sorts of regulations. The supervision's gonna be key also. One-to-one der, uh, supervisor, which is part of the co-op experience. Um, it could still be an activity, a potential activity, maybe be a co-op, what we're talking about. You know, turns over that particular project, you know, just.
Extensive, I understand that. But if we broke it down in the next ten years and we just chose one little section and made that the class.
I do, I think you could do that. You know, the only other thing we gotta watch is the chemicals. You know, the, the component with the chemicals. So, yeah, but I think it's valid. I think it's a valid point, you know, be able to give that experience, uh, with, with that particular activity in masonry. I think it's a valid.
There's areas, uh, uh, that are lower level areas that they could work around on the backside, um, you know, uh, or over by the automotive area that are not very high, but they could work it. So there's, there's definitely, there's definitely, um, opportunity to probably move them forward to help, help answer it really. Even, even our warehouse, we could probably do it as a, as a tool, cause we, that is not part of the process. So we could ask them if they could maybe power wash the warehouse for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good one, unless you ask.
Anybody else, uh?
Just wanted to get back to the elevator. Um, i- it's important for everybody to realize that i- it's not like the elevator in the middle of the Hilton. Not everybody uses that elevator to get up and down. It's just specific, uh, kids and services that that elevator is used for. So, um, to, to, um, it's inspected. Yeah, i- it's fine. It, it, it takes care of what we need, uh, at the school. Um, but to move on in, in a, in a medial way, in a, in a progressive way to replace whatever it is. Like you said, you've been here fifteen years. They've been here before you were here, so they probably need some work.
Well, we've made, uh, you know, the committee, I, uh, um, I wanna say some, maybe seven or eight years ago, um, Joe, we've made, um, we made some control upgrades and we did some work to a, a lot of things on. So we did make some investment here, um, with the, the elevators. Um, the, but they were piston-driven. Um, now they, it's a hydraulic thing where you're gonna take the oils out of them and then there's no oils and there's no hazard, uh, uh, in there. And we're gonna have state-of-the-art, um, you know, hydraulics, um, that are, that'll drive that. So that'll, that'll be almost like the engine of the, uh, the, uh, the elevator.
Yeah.
But we've made changes in all the controls, brought them up to grade, uh, lights. We painted, um, the, uh, one of the elevators, the main elevator, we're painting another one. I have, uh, one of my maintenance, my part-time maintenance, uh, person, um, doing the painting. Uh, he's got some talent with painting and he, he does real well there. So I think it's a, a, a thing that it'd be ideal if we can get these moving forward. Um, and, uh, because they do get a lot of use.
Sure, a- and I just, for the people that are watching at home, I don't want them to watch this and say that we're neglecting the elevators for the kids or whatever, that we, that we're taking care of it.
By, by no means are we neglecting the elevators. Um, we have a maintenance plan in place. There's a service that they maintain them all the time. We're up to speed, uh, on our permits and the state comes in and inspects us every year and we always pass inspection. And, and Otis, if we, if something fails, they come and fix it and they, they re, uh, re-pass it and they give us a temporary, uh, fix. So we got everything, uh, um, working right now and everything. We got a thing, we're good till, uh, the end of June.
Yeah. Uh, I have one last question. Nobody's touched on it. Thank you. It's been a, a long presentation for you. Um, under transportation and manufacturing, uh, looks like a few years out, three years out. We're looking at, uh, purchasing a paint booth, uh, for, um, the auto shop. When's the last time we replaced the paint booth? And the last time I was there, it seemed like it was in very good condition.
Three, three years ago, I think the paint booth was placed. I think, um, this is, um, a paint booth that, and Donnie can talk to it a little more, better than I can. But I think this is a, a secondary paint booth they were looking for. Um, but in order to do that, there's, um, there's a, I believe there's a gas issue where we're at almost ninety percent gas coming in, into the building as far as like capacity-wise. So when we add this booth, um, I don't know, it, that's one of the reasons why it's been kind of put out in the back burner. We're asking National Grid to take a hard look at, do we have any capacity to bring, um, more gas to the building? Because right now we're at our maximum capacity.
Do you understand what he's saying about the gas?
I understand.
Sorry, the, the booth, in case anybody is, the booth needs heat when you spray it to, um, seal the, the, uh, paint. And if there's not enough gas coming into the school to, uh, put that new, um, booth in there. Uh, it's, it's not anything that we can do.
Yeah, we have to broaden that gas line. Well, re- realistically, as far as I'm concerned, if we've, you know, replaced the paint booth three years ago and the automotive shop, the auto collision shop is really not really running at a hundred percent capacity. Um, I, we could put it on the wish list, but to me, I don't think that that's necessary. And I just want to go on record by saying that.
I'm with you.
I agree.
All right. Thank you, Mr. All right, Mr. O'Yah.
Uh, you don't even have to answer, but I, I was under the impression that, uh, there, there were, were two booths on there at one time. One was much smaller, probably not the state of the art. I think I remember hearing something like that, no, a while ago, maybe a year ago, two years ago. Whatever remains is not, there's only one booth, one, well, there's two booths there, really.
One's, one's an act, one's a real active booth.
Yeah.
The other one's a, I think a, a booth that they, I think they dry things in. They just leave it there and they dry. And they, but it's, it's not.
A good storage area.
Uh, no, they, they do, they paint and they let it, let it sit there to just dry over a couple of days.
Yes, Mr. O'Yah.
Uh, just quick, they were, during all the construction, there was one major project that they had and that was the, uh, the, uh, in the carpentry shop where all the dust.
Dust collection.
Yeah, and it was, um, is, is that running the way it should? No?
It is running, it is running the way it should.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Very good presentation. Thank you, Mr. Bure.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Great report.
Thank you, Mr. Bure.
Sure.
All right. Report of the business manager.
And as mentioned at the last meeting, we have to vote tonight on the short-term bond sale.
Motion approved.
So on February seventh, we, um, reissued the one point nine, um, ban. We, we had to award the ban to the lowest, um, purchaser who had the lowest net borrowing rate. That was Century Bank, Bank for one point nine percent. And the secretary has the vote language.
To where?
Sure. So we have language that I, that I'm gonna, going to be reading. So I hope all of you can stay awake, um, in, uh, a second, but yeah, here we go. The district secretary, that would be me, Fred Bahu, of the regional school district, school committee of the Greater Lowell Regional Vocational Technical School District in Massachusetts, in Lowell, Massachusetts, in Tinsborough, Massachusetts. Certified that at the meeting of the committee held February fifteenth, which is today, two thousand and eighteen, of which all, which all, of which meeting, all members of the committee were duly notified and to which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the committee in my custody. Voted that we hereby determine, in accordance with general law, chapter seventy B, that the amount of the cost of the district's high school project authorized by a vote of the committee passed on Oc- on October eleventh, two thousand and twelve, not being paid by the school facilities grant, it is twenty-one million seventy-eight thousand and thirty-three dollars. And we hereby approve of the issuance of notes and bonds in such amount under said general law, chapter seventy B. We further vote. Ted, to approve the sale of one point nine million dollars, one point nine percent general obligation bond anticipation note of the district dated February twenty-two, two thousand and eighteen, and payable February twenty-two, two thousand and nineteen, to Century Bank and Trust at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of five million, I'm sorry, of five thousand seven hundred dollars, pardon. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the note, the preparation and distribu- distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated February one, two thousand and eighteen, and a final official statement dated February seven, two thousand and eighteen, each in such form as may be approved by the district treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the district treasurer and the chair of the committee be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with S E C rule fifteen, chapters two to twelve, in such forms as may be approved by bond counsel to the district, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the note for the benefit of the holders of the note from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the business administrator to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the business administrator and bond counsel deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the note. Further voted that each member of the committee, the district secretary and the district treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as they may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provi- the provisions of the foregoing votes. Page two. I further certified that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot. That a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda includes the adoption of the, of the above votes, was filed with the clerks of each of the member municipalities of Lowell, Draken, Dunstable and Tinsborough collectively. And a copy of, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal buildings in which the offices of the cl- clerks and the district secretary are located. Or in accordance with the approved alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Massachusetts Attorney General as set forth in nine forty, C M R, twenty-nine point oh-three, at least forty hours, not including, forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the note were taken in a, any executive session, all in accordance with general law, chapter thirty-eight, par- paragraphs eighteen through twenty-five as amended, dated today, February fifteen, two thousand and eighteen.
Can you, um, read paragraph three on the first page again, please?
Um, I, I, actually, we have it noted right here if you'd like to read it.
You need a second?
We need a second on that motion.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Okay. So the short-term ban will be payable February twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. And just as a reminder, it was, um, a short-term borrowing, um, that was necessary only until five percent eligible cost that are, um, the MSBA holds back is released. So it's just to cover us until that's released. The next.
I have a question. Can we prepay this if we get certified by the, uh, state?
We could. There's no prepayment penalties.
Okay.
But one thing that's important is for us not to do it prior to receiving the actual funds. The auditor, um, advised to that we could look like we're in the hole. It would make our, you know, our liability would be greater than our assets. Um, the next thing on my agenda is the transfers. Um, we have three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents in transfers. The superintendent and I met with all of the administrators to reallocate surplus funds. Um, he made sure that it was, you know, priority items that were, um, instructional in nature. So those are all listed on the second sheet.
Motion approved.
Second.
About yet discussion?
Yeah, question, you mean?
So we have, um, some surplus equipment going out. So it looks like some of that stuff is old. Um, are we replacing any of that? And could any of that come out of the surplus that we have instead of, um?
Some of it, some of it is not gonna be replaced because it's outdated. It's not part of the curriculum. Some of it was purchased with this year's existing.
If I could interrupt, Mr. Espinola, that stuff was here when I was here.
No, no, uh, what I'm saying is it, it, does it need to be replaced? And can we use these surplus funds to replace it?
I don't think it's being replaced.
I, I think that some of it is, isn't it?
Well, the superintendent, they, um, he prioritized, so some of the things that if the, um, code inspector or the board of health said that it was, um, not.
Well, I'm not questioning why we get rid of it. I'm, I'm asking if we could take some surplus funds to replace it.
Some, some of the items are non-replaceable because they don't fit the curriculum. I think the bakery items. The other items are all replaced with this year's budget.
Okay.
So it's all in the budget high and, and the majority of stuff is already in, it's already in place.
Okay. Well, I'm just, you, and you understand where I'm coming from. Um, we have a surplus and, and I don't wanna have to come back and try to find the money for some of this stuff if we need to replace it already.
All set.
Roll call.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
And next, as we mentioned, we have five items from the, um, the artisans that need to be surplus. The items are actually beyond repaired, you know, board of health citations and things like that, they're old.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's actually writing out, I think so.
Yeah. Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, all business, any, anything, all business, no outstanding items from previous meetings? Uh, new business, any items not on the agenda brought up under this section will be discussed?
I think, actually, I'd like to bring something up.
Okay.
Um, during our discussion tonight, um, I heard a lot, a lot, an awful lot about co-op. And you know how, um, a new program may affect co-op and such like that. Uh, I think we all sort of take pride in the co-op here at Greater Lowell Tech. And I'm gonna ask the superintendent to, um, have a, a little bit more, um, wide-bodied, a, a, a little bit, a little bit more detailed report, uh, for us, co-op numbers, meaning, maybe we can. Wide-bodied, a, a, a little bit, a little bit more detailed report, uh, for us, co-op numbers, meaning maybe we can have the co-op director. Ask her how she is, um, soliciting businesses, uh, getting students, um, work, uh, opportunities. Or even, um, some, um, voluntary o- o- opportunities. So I'm gonna request that these, uh, co-op director be here for next meeting.
Do a little follow-up on that. Mister Bahu, I think some of the years do fluctuate. I, I remember, you know. Uh, having taught here for several years, that, you know, some years you walk in the door in September and. All the culinary seniors are going, you know what I mean? And then other times, it's, i- it's with the economy or the trends or. If it's their family-run businesses, uh, you know, you're down on your luck and. You put your family to work and you don't hire someone else, but, but I, you know, I, I think, you know, maybe we could find some. Other statistics of why.
Yeah, I think realistically, you've been in the sh- in the building for a long time, you taught here and such like that, so you have that firsthand knowledge. Uh, but I think a lot of our school committee members might sort of have, you know, just wanna.
No, 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 no.
Co-op director.
No, no, I, I under- I understand and, you know, you, you, you know, it's just only yourself and, you know. There may have been times where you hired someone and then maybe another time.
And I have, and that's correct, they would.
All right. Your son? Uh, committee person motion, excuse me. A motion by Mister Espinola to amend the school committee policy and the Greater Lowell Regional. Agreement to change voting at the March meeting to be effective April one. The voting at the December meeting to be effective January one. For the annual reorganization of committee and election of officers, beginning with the November two thousand and eighteen election.
Mister Chairman, I would be removing that motion from the agenda to put it to old business. Until we find out, um, uh, some more serious and solid, uh, documentation and legal. Um, uh, direction from our, um, communities. That we serve and our, and our council. So I'll, I'll be removing that, uh, to place it onto old business and, uh. Just, uh, when we get direct direction, uh, we can address it, uh, when, when that happens.
Thank you, honey.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mister Espinola, um. Report of subcommittees, uh, February one, two thousand and eighteen, finance subcommittee report.
Motion to approve.
Mister Espinola.
Yes.
Mister Bahu.
Yes.
Mister Lemay.
Yes.
Mister Booton.
Yes.
Mister Tatsias. Mister Gigi.
Yes.
Mister O'Hair.
Yes.
Mister Moran.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Mister Espinola.
Yes.
Mister Bahu.
Yes.
Mister Lemay.
Yes.
Mister Booton.
Yes.
Mister Tatsias.
Yes.
Mister Gigi.
Yes.
Mister O'Hair.
Yes.
Mister Moran.
Yes.